Thank you so much. So just a note about the questions that we have tonight. I had a very busy day and I did my best to get the questions out to the candidates. I'm not really into gotcha questions. And so they probably have had, what, two hours? Not a lot of time. So some of these questions came from us, some of them came from other debates that they've had, some of them came from people who have experience having been on the commission or at the county or our experience as patrons of Utah County. And so, and some of the questions to cover, the variety of our delegates, might feel a little bit out there. We'll see what they say. Our position is that we ask the questions and we see where they're at just to give you guys a little better idea of your candidates. So with that, if we can get a round of applause for our candidates and for our moderator, we'll start this debate.
All right. Thank you, Kristi. It's a pleasure to be here. Again, my name is Bill Lee and I had the opportunity to serve you as county commissioner for eight years and it was a pleasure to do so. And we'll take the opportunity now to talk about what is important and some of the things, some of the questions. And I realize as delegates that a lot of times you're probably looking at the candidates and thinking, "They all like ice cream. They all like apple pie. What's the difference?" We won't solve that tonight, but we will ask some questions. And if you can do your follow-up questions afterwards and ask them more in-depth questions, that would probably be very helpful as you go through that process. And also, I wanted to applaud you for jumping in, getting elected at your caucus night and coming here and doing your due diligence as you're looking through this process. I tip my hat to you for doing that because sometimes it can be painful, but also it's rewarding in going through and looking at these candidates in the eye and asking them questions. So with that, I'm going to start with the very first one. And my timer is right here, so a little housekeeping stuff. We'll do mainly one-minute answers since we've got five up here. And he will give you a one minute, then 30 seconds, and then done. And we'll move to the next. We're going to start here with Skylar and we'll just move down so you can pass the microphone. And then we will also, when we get to the end, we'll come back and do it back and forth. Well, you know what? I'm going to change that. Let's go down and then we'll start with Tom on the next one. And then rotate it that way so everyone gets that same opportunity. Okay. First question. Do you support housing at any cost regardless of look and/or density? Is solving affordability housing a responsibility of the government?
Testing, testing. Can you hear me? Okay, awesome. My name is Skylar Beltran and I'm running for Utah County Commissioner. To answer Bill's question on housing affordability, the government needs to stay out of the way. That's the premise that we need to go with on affordable housing. Are we going to solve it at the county level? Absolutely not. Do I feel for our young folks who need an affordable house? Absolutely. I said the other day, the second was buying my house when I did. So I feel the pain, but the government does not solve the problem. All the state solutions we see subsidize demand and that just exacerbates the problem. So we need to stay out of the way, let the private market do it, and they'll solve it way better than the government ever could.
I'm Tom Westmoreland. I'm in my seventh year as mayor of Eagle Mountain. Yeah, we've had to deal with housing, planning housing. Am I for anything, anywhere, anytime? No, no. I'm all about quality. We need quality for our people. We need to protect our quality of living. So, and it has to work not just now, not just in this market, but well into the future. So, planning the right products in the right places and having quality homes is the answer, not just run them up everywhere.
I am Andrew Jackson. I'm running for Utah County Commission. I would say no. We don't have to have high density regardless of what it looks like. We have to make sure that things are compatible with the neighborhood. But when you look at properties, you can find out what the difference in the value of those properties are if you have two pieces of raw ground next to each other. One gets annexed into a city, the value goes up. And then it gets zoned, the value goes up. And then you have utilities that go to that property, the value goes up again. What happened? The government actions were all in line and that's why you have that increased value. One of the things that we need to do to encourage more affordable housing is to right-size our utilities and not over-expand them because then that happens that we'll end up getting high density from that. And high density doesn't always equate to affordability.
I don't agree that the government should be involved in any sense of the housing market. I started in the mortgage business and there's a lot of programs out there that allow from the private sector for first-time home buyers. And there's a lot of other programs like the HUD who also helps first-time home buyers to be able to keep our upcoming generations to be able to focus on how to be a qualified candidate to get into a home. I don't agree with the condensed housing and I definitely do not agree that we should continue to have these subsidies for these land developers that continue to push these houses and that our upcoming generations or even us, the average income right now needs to be over well above $120,000 for you to be able to get into a home. So let's keep the government out of the private sector.
Hello, I'm Diane Garcia. I'm running for Utah County Commission. And it seems like we pretty much all agree on the fact that government needs to stay out as much as possible. I do also think that we need to look at quality over quantity. We keep building and building and building and we still haven't solved the problem. So perhaps building more isn't the answer to our housing problem. I also believe that it isn't as important to build all these homes to keep our children and grandchildren living here. I think it's a good thing for our children and grandchildren to move out of the area and to experience life away from mom and dad and away from their protected communities so that they can learn and bring back things that they've learned. And that's what the pioneers did when they first came here, right? They came here, settled stuff, and then they were all sent out to different areas to settle in and grow those areas.
All right, thank you. The next one, we'll start with Tom. The county is facing a $10 million budget deficit in 2024. What do you think should be done to close that gap?
All right, this is the question we all love, right? So, yeah, the county budget isn't just one big bowl of wax. It's made up of many parts. So we have to look at every one of those parts, every one of those funding mechanisms and see what's performing at the right level, what's providing the standard, what's lagging behind. But certainly, there are always efficiencies that we can do, but in the end, sometimes cuts can be painful. So that's why I really like economic development, to bring in additional funding to offset the demand for rising taxes.
So when you look at a budget for a city or county, some people say they want a balanced budget. They're going to fight for a balanced budget. Well, by state law, cities and counties have to have a balanced budget. So it's not just a political statement, it's the law. What we do with the budget is, just like you at home, you consider what your revenues are going to be and what your expenses are going to be over a period of time. The real issue is with the budget and how we spend that budget, excuse me, the actual funding in those funds, we need to make sure that it's a structurally balanced budget, which is you use one-time funding for one-time expenses, ongoing funding for ongoing expenses, and make sure that you don't get those two mixed up. Thank you.
Check. It's a lot. How would I cut the budget, is the question. One of the biggest things when you start looking at is, what are the items that are causing us to go on red? One of the big things that I've been learning as I've been on this journey is UTA. UTA is a goliath of a cost that we really seriously look into the books and see how we can cut that off. I mean, for the number of people who use certain transit, it's costing us over $85 million plus a year. Let's look at that. Let's cut things off.
So one of the things that we need to make sure that is done properly is that our property values and assessments are fair and equitable. There are homes that are million-dollar homes that are harder to get to market value and perhaps maybe they're not paying the same amount or the percentage that the rest are. And we need to look at that. We need to make sure the assessor's office is funded properly, that they have qualified people, so that we all start off on the same battleground. And then, I think, looking at the budget, you look at things that can be cut, you look at things that need to be trimmed. But also, you need to look at increasing our sales tax and part of that is tourism. We need to bring good-quality tourism to our county to generate that revenue.
Well, we got in this mess because we project on our budget. So we projected 7%, 8% growth and it came in at 2% or 3%. So our first step needs to change our budget process and have a much more conservative budget approach and budget for a 2% or 3% growth. And then we can start allocating and giving our departments what they need once we realize the gain. So we need to fundamentally change the way we do processes. Also, let's start with conservative principles. The budget should be easy when we do not spend on our salaries and our travel and all these other things. The thing is, is it going to solve our problem when we raise ourselves from $119,000 two years ago to $167,000 just two years later? No, it's not going to solve the budget problem. But it's a conservative principle of who takes the cut first. We're here to serve. We are not here to enrich ourselves.
All right. This next one. NACs are Nature Asset Corporations. Are you in favor or against? These are special service, these are special districts prevalent in Utah. And so the Nature Assets Corporation, and if you need more clarification, I can use open.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay, so for instance, there's opportunities out there for corporations to come and buy land and put it into like a conservancy for long periods of time. Some of you may be aware of that. This one here is the Nature Asset Corporation in which you put it in, you know, a ranch or a farm that's locked away for a long time and they pay some of that money for that opportunity.
Great, perfect. Thank you for the clarification on that. I'm opposed to that. If you look right now, 90% of the population in Utah lives on 1% of the land. And people say, "Oh, we're getting to double in population." Well, if we do that, we'll be on 2% of land. We have enough land that's in federal land and state land and other land that's put aside that we don't need to put more land into that or allow those conservancy districts to go into place. I understand that farmers can do that in order to continue to farm the land, but if you look at them over a longer period of time, you have problems with weeds, et cetera, and they're not taking care of them. Heber City has this on the north part of Heber City.
What I learned from Natural Asset Corporations, to me, I think the definition says maximize the value of the land's ecological services rather than to generate a profit from the traditional activities. So, I'm down south and we have a lot of natural resources and I'm for that. Let's see how we continue to keep our natural resources. The longer we're able to continue our natural resources, the better. That's what I stand for.
So there's a little bit of a difference between a conservation movement and a natural asset corporation. A natural asset corporation is very often an outside entity that is outside of our state and even outside of our country. And I am totally against that in bringing in all those outside influences and control. So I would be against them.
Yeah, so our state treasurer, Marla Oaks, has done an amazing job fighting this and it needs to be fought because this is outside entities owning our farms, our water, our mining, our gems, all of these things without any accountability. And it serves Wall Street and not Main Street. And that's where we need to flip. We are not here to serve Wall Street. We are not here to be publicly trading our lakes and our natural resources. They stay here. They stay with your elected representative who you can hire and fire. When you sell it to somebody else, we lose all accountability.
Yeah, a natural asset corporation is really Washington DC trying to tell us what to do with our lands. And so I really believe that decisions are made best locally and we need to do a good job of managing our natural resources the way we do it. The people, just yesterday, there were, you know, people talking about the Great Salt Lake and managing that and talking about how capitalism is a failed program and talking about bringing socialism into it. So we have to, this is, you know, water, natural conservation is not a liberal concept. This is a conservative one. We can use conservative principles to manage our own lands and show them how to do it. We can do it with Utah Lake. We can bring life back to Utah Lake by bringing in marshes to help clean the water so that people can have access to it, so we can have good recreation out there. We can set the example for them to follow instead of them coming down on us, telling us what to do.
Okay, so I'm going to ask some really quick questions. They're kind of lightning round stuff. There'll be yes or no. So pass the mic quickly. Who's starting this one?
Jay.
Okay. Have you ever declared bankruptcy? If so, how many times? Be that either personal or as a principal owner of an organization?
No.
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 That was quick. Thank you.
It's sad we have to ask that. I know, but yeah.
The next one. We're talking about SB 54. Would you be in support of repealing SB 54?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yes.
This is the vanilla side of it. And then lastly, and it can be either currently or past, who is your favorite political thinker? Just a name.
Senator Mike.
I'm going to go with the gipper, Ronald Reagan.
John Adams.
I'd say Ronald Reagan because he's not just a thinker, he's always been a doer.
And I would say George Washington because he had vision and organization.
Great, thank you. Travel. The travel budget for all three commissioners in 2021 was about $7,500 per commissioner. That amount has increased to over about $20,000 per commissioner in 2024. Do you think this is appropriate? And if so, why? And if not, why?
It's mine. I'm sorry, could you repeat that really quickly? What's the?
So in 2021, the travel budget per commissioner was about $7,500 per commissioner. In 2024, it's about $20,000 per commissioner. And so do you think that's appropriate? Or yes or no, or why?
Well, I can't speak directly whether it's appropriate or not, but certainly if we're going to be engaged, if we're going to have representation that's out fighting for our causes, I suspect that they will have to travel. They can't sit in their offices all day and get that done. They've got to be in the Capitol and fighting the fight representing Utah County. And it's really, it's time for Utah County to take the lead in the state instead of Salt Lake County running the show and setting the standard. So we have our values here that people need to hear.
No, I don't think it's appropriate. I'm going to be the commissioner who's going to be in the office. So I'm a guy that got up every morning for 30-plus years, took a shower, went into work, did my work, and came home. One of the problems we have is you go to find the commissioners and they're nowhere to be found. Maybe they're across the country, maybe they're some other place. I'm going to be the homeboy county commissioner. I know a lot of this stuff and I would be a trainer at many of these sessions that they go to to get trained. So I can do it on Zoom, I can watch it on Zoom, et cetera. I don't need to be somewhere across. If I want to talk to John Curtis, I just call him on his cell phone. That's how it is.
I'd have to say it's not really as appropriate, but is it manageable? Possibly. You have to benefit from being able to actually sit across the table and represent your value of whether it's DC because I know the commissioners have to also represent us at the federal level. But why is it that the pocketbook of the commission itself is not able to cover with $174,000 plus pay raise that they just got? So we really have to look at how we can manage that and budget things out. So I would say it's manageable.
So I would agree with bits and pieces of everything said. One is I do believe that our county commissioners do need to be out meeting people. They need to be meeting with different organizations and they are assigned to different boards that have different issues. So they do need to be out of the office to meet those requirements. But I do not believe that the amount of travel money is perhaps warranted. I would think that they would need to manage that a little bit more. I did notice that there was something on the upcoming budget, and I think it actually was today in commission meeting, where they're going down to St. George for the convention center to have their budget meetings. And I think they can do them right here.
Yeah, I'm the one who's been hammering this, so absolutely not. $20,000? Think of your personal vacations and how much travel one person can do for $20,000. It's obnoxious. We absolutely do not need that. Do we need a conference once in a while? Sure. That's fine. That's $2,000, $3,000, $4,000 bucks a year. $20,000? I had a travel budget when I was in corporate, in the corporate world, and I made sure I stayed at hotels and I went to restaurants that I would have done on my own personal funds. And when that's what we need for a stewardship of tax money, we do not stay at fancy hotels and state dinners on taxpayer dollars.
What's the role of a commissioner for election integrity?
It's a great question. I think one of the main things that we have to do is ensure that your vote is private, that we don't have whomever going around and trying to find out who voted which way on different issues. So one, it's important for us to keep that. The other is that working with the elections office at the county, we need to make sure that they've got all of the equipment and things that they need to make sure that that's safe, secure, and that your vote is counted and ghost votes aren't counted.
Can I ask, will you repeat the question again? Bill, please.
Yes. What is the role of the commissioner? The commissioner plays an election integrity.
Keep ballots accountable. Make sure that we do get all those votes counted for. Make sure that everybody's voice was heard through that ballot. Making sure that your vote was designated exactly to where it needed to go. We need to keep that as transparent as possibly that we possibly can.
Okay, so I believe that voter integrity starts with respecting the fact that the voters elected someone. So currently, there is a clerk that is Utah County. He is over elections. We need to honor the fact that we voted that person in and we need to honor the fact that they know what they're doing and give them the support financially and publicly and not bickering publicly. So that the citizens do not think that we're a dysfunctional organization bickering amongst each other. We need to be united and trust our elected officials.
You're on fire today, Diane. Yes, I absolutely agree with Diane. We need to support the elected clerk because you hire and fire that person. Not me, not anybody else. You get to pick that person, so they need support. Couple of things. We need to keep our roles clean and we need to make sure we have funding and accountability to those roles. We also need to be open and transparent. When audits are requested, we need to deliver them. If the people do not trust our elections, then we have failed. We need to make sure that the public feels our elections are safe and secure. And also, the county commissioners need to make sure and approve they do the canvassing of the election two weeks after we're done. And if there's any issues there, we need to address them. The commission has final authority to say, "Yes, this election was clean and good."
Yeah, it's obvious that voter confidence has declined. All we have to do is look at the voter, turn out how dismal it is. And much of the reason is because we made it as easy as can possibly be to vote. Yet people don't vote because they don't think that their vote counts and makes a difference. So the leadership of the commissioners is really important on making sure it's not just, it is about integrity, yes, but it's about being above reproach. Doing the audits, going the extra mile, making sure that we put as much confidence into this system as we can for our voters so that their votes count.
All right, next question. Talk about outside compensation. So because you're running for full-time position as a county commissioner, that's how this question comes about. Are you willing to disclose to the public every year whether you have received any outside income? And probably second to that, will you accept pay for sitting on outside boards?
I think I've been pushing transparency like crazy. I think we need to be completely transparent with our community members. I, if I was to receive money, yes, but why would I receive money? I think there's enough money paid in there. And then would I receive money from any outside sources? I would not. So transparency and no.
So I currently work for the county. I've worked for the county for 19 years. And we have to fill out a form stating if we have any outside work. So it is required to do that. I own a farm. I receive income from operating my farm. And I report that when we have to fill out that form. I don't believe that the commissioners should get paid to be on a board if they're representing the county as part of their job. They should not get extra pay.
Yeah, absolutely not. And I'm going to go a step further. You will never see on my campaign finance disclosures a donation from anyone who will ever see business in front of the county commission. That's a no-go. Anyone who faces the county will never be on my donation roll. And I'm happy to be fully transparent in any outside funds. Boards and that kind of thing, no. We're paid $167,000. If you can't live off that, you should not be representing me.
Yeah, this is something that I'm doing already as mayor. I already file disclosures on any additional income. And I already sit on boards and take no pay for that. That's part of my duties as an elected official to sit on those boards, represent the county, represent all residents.
I'm retired. I work now for a consulting firm in Pleasant Grove, Horrocks Engineering. I won't have any outside work if I'm elected as a commissioner. My wife and I are mostly funding my campaign out of savings. I've got a few friends, but it'll be completely open to everybody on that. I won't take any pay for going to any committee meetings that I'm assigned for. That's actually changed state law about maybe eight or nine years ago. So you can't even do that. I don't know why somebody would violate the law. Plus, I'm not going to take any donations from anybody that's outside or trying to come in before the commission on anything. Thank you.
Masks were a big issue with the commission during COVID. Where would you have stood on this issue?
Okay, I was not a big fan of masks. My personal decision was not to get vaccinated for my personal reason. But I think that it is a personal decision. I believe if you went out in public and you were worried about things, then you should have worn the mask or you should have stayed home instead of trying to dictate what other people do.
Yeah, absolutely not. Masks is silly. Arrows in the grocery store is ridiculous. Telling people they can't go to funerals is obnoxious. I mean, what a mess. And let me tell you, it's easy to say, no, we wouldn't do that now. Go to the Daily Herald and search Skyler Beltran. I wrote multiple op-ads during 2020 and I made it very clear that it was terrible policy. I defended Provo Mayor Kefusi when she vetoed the Provo City Council. We do not need to take orders from the government and I will never, never make you wear a mask.
Yeah, this is, this is another one where I don't have to tell you what I would do. I can tell you what I did as mayor of Eagle Mountain. We do not require masks. We, we didn't even close our parks. In fact, we told people, get out in the sunshine, get the fresh air, do not lock yourself in because that's what you need to be emotionally and physically healthy. So we did not, we did not restrain our people. And just in case anybody's interested, nobody in my family got a vaccination either.
I was listening in on all the discussions, both at the county level with the mayors and at the state level where they decided some of these decisions were made. At the, at the county level, we had some mayors who had their pickleball court open, other mayors who didn't. And that caused a problem because everybody who's pickleball courts were closed, went over to the other city and used their pickleball courts, right? So there has to be some rationale behind these things. It was new. People were scared. Didn't know what was going on. Hindsight is 2020. You have to look at that. Um, I didn't require masks, but some of our federal agencies where we would deal with people in nursing homes, they had requirements that there had to be masks in those situations. But we let, otherwise we left it up to the individual to decide.
Man, I had a hard time with that whole 2021 issue and the COVID. While the government was pushing and pushing on everybody to wear a mask and forcing us to get vaccination, I was busy trying to keep my business and being able to keep jobs going on while I had some of my friends losing their business because of these mandates. And one of the quotes that I love by Ronald Reagan is that he said, you know, it becomes a depression when it hits you. So it's, it's, it's a issue that we needed to really look into how our elected officials started for the governor all the way down. When these folks are entrusted with our safety and our well-being and they're not really looking into our best interest because being mandated to wear masks even in our own car, that's like a sci-fi movie, right? You ever see somebody driving their car with their mask on and they're all by themselves? Like who are you going to infect? The car? So no to those, any of those mandates that vaccinations or required any masks.
All right, another issue that was dealt with and had a lot of controversy was the UVX or the BRT line. Do you see that as a success or a failure and why? As a follow-up, would you have supported using road infrastructure funding to construct the UVX or as part of it?
Yeah, I see Mike Carpenter laughing up here because he knows my answer, disaster. The bus is a total disaster. The problem with the bus, not only does it take a lane of traffic, which makes it even worse, but it's a money pit, a hundred and ninety million dollar price tag. They take a quarter cent sales tax to make the payment on it. That money should be used for roads and improvements. It was a total mess and we need to admit that it was a mess and not expand it any further. We haven't even paid it off yet.
Yeah, well, it's going to be hard on this one to not to kind of do a ditto because yeah, especially when those bus lanes are not planned for and they're taking up a whole lane, then they're not helping move traffic. So I mean, that's, that's the question of the story right there.
The 8:30 bus line had 1,500 trips a day on it. The Bus Rapid Transit or UVX has 15,000. Before COVID, we were pushing 15,000 trips a day on that. When we looked at it over a series of years and with engineering from UDOT, UDOT owns both University Avenue and University Parkway, they looked at it and they said, this is the most conservative, cheapest way to go with it. And we're not using road dollars for it. It's transit dollars that are being used to pay for it.
Okay, go ahead, Jay. You're up.
Thank you. I, I have to say that we really have to look at the cost of what that's really costing us. And why is that continuing to be on the red? It has never been self-sufficient. That's another item that I've been learning a lot about. I, I, I see a lot of these people in the morning who I would like to say that I see riding these buses, but other than the bus driver, there's really nobody else in these buses. And so I think we need to be cost-effective and just look at how we can really manage that and do away with it.
All right, so I, I have a lot of thoughts on this subject. I do not ride public transit, never had a need for it. I know a lot of people were very upset when this was going on and for a lot of different reasons. I had a friend who was upset because of the old trees in Provo were going to be removed because of this. And there were a lot of emotions and a lot of speculation. As we've seen, there's different reports on if it makes money, if it doesn't make money, if there's riders, if there isn't riders. And so today when I was thinking about this, since we got these questions like an hour before we got here, I thought of a movie that came out in the eighties and it was about a rural community that had someone new move in from outside and they had a really new idea that everybody hated and that was teaching their kids to dance. And they hated that and then they found out that it actually was a good thing. So maybe someday when we have the Olympics here, we'll be looking going, wow, we're so glad we have this.
Taxes. The commission has raised property, raised property and sales taxes over the years for things like public safety, Utah Transit Authority and other things and to close the gap on the budget deficit. Which of those tax increases did you support or oppose and why?
Well, I, I don't believe I was engaged in either one of those as far as supporting or denying. But what, can you give us that list one more time?
Well, it's just, it's just kind of a partial list. It has public safety, Utah Transit and to close the budget, the gap and the budget deficit.
Again, there's a lot, a lot of stuff going on there. So definitely it's, 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 it's hard to, you can't do it just to, just generalize this. You have to be specific. You have to have purpose for, for those tax, tax rates and those tax dollars. So I want to keep taxes as low as we can. There's pressures on all of those departments because of inflation. Again, that's why I want economic development to fill that gap because otherwise it just comes back to tax and spend and on the back of the residents.
Um, I appreciate the, the question. The thing that happens with tax increases and decreases, you have the rate and you have the base. And a lot of politicians will say, I lower taxes five years in a row. What they did was just lower the rate and the value went up and so you're actually paying more in taxes. Let me tell you a little bit about what we did with a quarter cent for transit for the BRT project. In 2003, your county elected officials vote, uh, at the legislature voted in favor of this legislation. In 2006, 70% of the people in the county voted in favor of it. What I did was I started the first in the country review board, having elected officials review every single expenditure on that route and to make sure that we were saving all those tax dollars and not spending wastefully. FTA said no. I said, we're going to do it. And then they came back and said, that was a good idea. We're going to do it nationwide.
Can you repeat that question here, please, Bill?
The commission has raised property and sales taxes over the years for things like public safety, Utah Transit Authority and to close the gap on budget deficits. Which of those taxes, tax increases did you support or oppose and why?
As a small business owner, I supported absolutely none of them. I'm always concerned how the overreach of taxation of the government is eating out my dollar debt. In today's world, only buys 84 cents. And if we're going to be looking at how we're going to increase taxes, what is it for? Recently, I mean, the money that's being shipped out to Ukraine is in the billions of dollars. How is it that we're not able to, through the taxation system, be able to provide a decent comfort way of support to our personal vets? How is it that we're not able to provide some help to the mental people who need possibly that type of help? And as a business owner, I'm always looking to see how I can squeeze and squeeze and continue to live on a budget.
So as unpopular as it may be, sometimes the tax rates do have to be increased to increase revenue for services provided, whether it be transportation or whether it be something in the budget, the health department or something going on. So I think that each individual year needs to be scrutinized very carefully and have those priorities set. You see the school districts raise theirs almost every year. And every time they do that, it makes everybody else feel a smaller piece of the pie. So because we haven't raised our tax rate as often as some of the other entities, it makes it even harder for us to get that revenue. And, and then when we do, everybody complains because they're so used to having the school districts and other entities like the cities continually raise the tax rates. So I think we need to carefully scrutinize that and be very careful because it is your tax dollars. And when we do receive that, we need to have good stewardship over that money.
Yeah, so the budget, with all the growth, your quality of life has decreased and all the growth should be covering these additional expenses. But at every level, city, county, state, we continue to see massive increases in budget, not even close to population increases. We don't have a tax issue. We have a spending problem and we need somebody who's willing to say no. No to all of these extra things. We need to be cut to lean and no, 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 we have any extra pork.
What's your, what's your thoughts on smart streets and 15-minute cities?
Yeah, uh, so this gets into a lot of like UN globalism kind of a thing. I think, uh, you know, the, we're not, generally when someone brings this up, they're not talking about, you know, you know, can you walk to your grocery store or something? But, but we're, we're talking about limiting, limiting automotive transportation for global warming reasons and, and things like that. So certainly we, we want, in Eagle Mountain, we have a lot of trails and we appreciate those trails and we use them. But it's not an opportunity to restrict people. It's a, it's an opportunity for our people just to get out and enjoy, enjoy the outdoors. So, uh, no, in, in the ways generally defined, no, I, I would not for the, those agendas.
The smart cities, the 15-minute cities, that's a tool that can be successful, but not in Utah. It doesn't work here. I'm not in favor. Um, we use our cars because of the tier three fuels, tier three cars. There's very little pollution. I am opposed to these walkable communities that they said it's going to be affordable and it's not affordable. It doesn't work. If you look at Midtown building on Orm, it had to go through several bankruptcies before they got it going. Just doesn't work here. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't, uh, smart streets or the 15-minute cities. I think in paper it may look good, but in reality it doesn't. I, I think compacting that many people, it would only, it's not a matter of if, but it, when it's going to start causing commotion and attracting crime. And a lot of people say, yes, Jay, but we need affordable housing. We do need affordable housing, but that's why there's programs like FHA that allows first-time home buyers to be able to see how they can qualify and to get into a home. We don't need these houses or cities, I should say, being pushed down into our cities from elected officials, starting from our governor and saying that it's a great thing for our community when it's not.
So I'm only aware of one of those 15-minute cities that is going to be built in our county, Utah State. First off, sorry, the name that they chose. The council's office, we have people from outside calling and they call Utah County for anything in Utah State because they get confused. It's going to be even more confusing when they're calling for Utah City. And so I don't like the name. I don't like the concept. It would not be for me. I know there are some people that think that's cool. A lot of European style communities are that way. And some people are leaning towards that, some things in back east in the eastern United States. But I don't think that it is something that fits with our environment, with our weather, with our seasons and, and with the culture that we have built here in Utah.
So everybody said they're against it, but we need to be also fighting against it. We can be against it. We need to fight. And when these other entities come and push this on us, we need somebody to stand up and say, we're not interested. No, again, we need somebody who's able to say no. We also miss the aspect of control. These 15-minute cities or privately owned streets is control. We then take away from public control and we give it to other people who we do not elect and they have to tell us what to do. They limit our mobility. They can raise the rates to pay for these roads, to charge us to park there. We're giving up way too much control when we allow these kind of projects.
Redevelopment agencies, also known as RDAs, and tax increment financing, also known as TIFs, are you, are tools used to bring about more economic development? What is your position on RDAs and TIFs?
Great, so tax increment financing, redevelopment agencies, they have a very, again, it's a tool that works in some places, but most of the places it doesn't. So I would be very skeptical. It has to be post-performance. So they come in, they put in utilities and then it's a post-performance TIF or TIF, and it has to be short. And then also there has to be a time period that the company has to stay after the TIF is done. And if they leave before that, then it has to be paid back. The money has to be paid back because a lot of places will just go TIF hopping, if you will, from one community to another, to another, until they're, they each have expirations on that. So it would be very, very limited that I would think about it at all.
That's another item that I've been really paying attention to and learned about. I think that it, it's a balancing act. We do need some of these incentives, but now if we're going to be incentivizing retail business, they're going to put out a lot of our mom and pop shops out of business. I don't think we need that kind of business. But if we're able to bring manufacturing plants that will bring competitive jobs and give us high salary to our local people, let's look at the balance book. Let's see what are the balances that Let's see what are the balances that are the benefits and not so much of the negative. Let's see how we can grow together and have this be a contribution to our community economically.
So I have an example, an RDA that occurred in the Spanish Fork area and that was the windmills at the Malcom Canyon. Now, they recorded and given ten million dollars break in their property taxes because we wanted them to build the windmills at the Malcom Canyon. First off, they already knew the wind blows in Spanish Fork Canyon. So they're not gonna go somewhere where the wind is blowing to build their windmills. So sometimes the writing is on the wall and they've already done all their research and the correct place and the best place to giving away our taxpayer dollars is not good for our citizens.
Yeah, so tax increment financing is picking winners and losers. And as a conservative principle, we don't like picking winners and losers. So they need to be very far a few between. We do not need to support corporate America, support mom-and-pop, local people in our community. They don't get the opportunity to come and tell us, well, if you don't give us half our taxes back, we're heading to Nevada. Well, you can go then. We're not interested. So we need to be very particular when we do that. And there's three criteria that would be important to me. One is the city and the community in which they are wanting to be settled in. Come to the county and say, we really want this. I can be much more supportive if it's city-driven. The next, it needs caps on limits and terms. We can't give blank checks for forty years to people making billions of dollars at the expense of our taxpayers. And third, it needs to truly be areas that would not see economic development. We hear people are coming, people are coming, the growth's here, we just have to deal with it. Well, let's not put fuel on the fire every single chance we get.
This is something, this is a subject I wish I had much more than a minute on because I've got lots of experience in this. And Andrew, thank you for mentioning post-performance because that is a major distinction. So Eagle Mountain, I can speak from experience, Eagle Mountain are local businesses, but we have used it for game changer companies. And so investing tens of billions of dollars into our community. So there's talk about splitting the school and Eagle Mountain is looking really good right now for whatever district they land in because what we have in the pipeline from our arcades is fifty million dollars a year for the school district alone.
All right, thank you. I just got the signal that we need to wrap it up. There's tons more questions and I'm sure you have many as well to look, look them in the eye and ask them, the ones that you think that maybe you need more clarification on. So we're gonna give the candidates, look at the, give the candidates a round of applause for being here. We're gonna give them two minutes to either clarify anything they'd like or give their final speech on it. And so we're starting, who's, who's, Andrew?
Jay.
Oh, Jay. So Jay, you're, you're up.
Boy, I'm not the lucky one today. Well, my name's Jay Ugarte. I'm running for commissioner simply because I think there's a lot of concerns that we need to address, not just as the elected official, but as a community. Not just keep relying on the services of words, but then when we have these elected officials betray us by their actions. We need to really, really hold these individuals accountable. My taxes about six years ago for my property were about roughly eighteen hundred dollars. Now they're hitting close to thirty-four hundred dollars and I live down in Santa Claus. There isn't much to do in Santa Claus, but I'd really like to wonder, why is that? We don't have more transparency of how our tax dollars are being spent. And again, we need to have individuals who have integrity and not just be able to write a check, but have the integrity to sit down and really budget what we need to be balancing out. And it's easy to spend somebody else's money, right? I mean, I think that's what Obama brought us. He'd always say, hey, the guy behind me is paying my food for today. And again, if we're also looking for a lot of experience, Joe Biden brought us a lot of experience and look at the mess that we're in. I'm Jay Ugarte. Thank you very much.
So I have worked for the county for nineteen years. I've worked in the assessors department where those property values are established, where people call in and they get their property value notices and yell and scream and complain. And where we explain how property values are calculated and actually all the different entities that get, that get your tax dollars. Because I've been an employee for so long, employees see and hear things that the public does not. And that is what has made me want to run for county commissioner. I believe that a county commissioner should make sure that they follow the law in every aspect. I believe that they should uphold and honor the elected officials that are within the county and publicly and privately support them without leaking things to the press or backstabbing them. It makes it so that the function of the government does not work. People do not trust the government. I hear it daily. I want to bring back that trust. I want to bring back that integrity. I want to show our citizens that we are people just like you. We pay taxes and that we are gonna be responsible with your taxes, with your emotions, with your experiences within our county. I want to empower people. So I want knowledge and education readily available so that you can learn how your taxes are calculated. You can learn where your money's going. You do know how each of us vote and how things are, that meetings are open. And I feel that by empowering each individual one of you, that that lifts, that empowers the community, your neighborhoods and ultimately lifts the power of the entire county. I'm Diane Garcia and I'm asking for your vote.
My wife, Kelly, and I and our two sons live in Lehigh and we love this county. And that's why I got into this race because we need fresh, new, outside, private sector experience in this scene. I come from the private sector. We do not need to elect the same people over and over in the system, well-connected. That experience, folks, we need new, fresh perspective. I've served the community as Utah County Republican Party Chair. I've served the community on the chairman of the Board of Adjustments for Utah County and I've served recently on the Utah County County Commission. I've seen inside, I work on the outside and we need fresh, new perspective, a fighter willing to say no. And I ask for your vote and my name is Skylar Beltran for Utah County Commissioner.
I'm asking you to look at my track record. I'm all about results. You'll see my passion that I've poured into my city of Eagle Mountain and that's what I want to bring to Utah County. Just as my Eagle Mountain team and I have been able to preserve quite a bit of open space in Eagle Mountain, we need to protect our open space and our agriculture in Utah County. And so I'm asking you to join me in that. I'm asking you to join me in cleaning up Utah Lake and bringing it back to life. I'm asking you to join me, I've already been lobbying and bringing road funding to the county, to the area. I've already been building up and strengthening the economy. And I've already been fighting for our families and designing high-quality developments, high-quality places to live. I'm asking you to join me, Tom Westmoreland, in making Utah County the best place to raise a family on the planet. Thank you.
I am Andrew Jackson. President Andrew Jackson said, "It is to be regretted that the rich and powerful too often bend the acts of government for their own selfish purposes." I want to guarantee to you that I will not be, as a commissioner, I won't try and enrich myself, enrich my friends, all those type of things. I'm gonna be there to serve you. I moved out here my junior year in high school. My mom was gonna move out here. She came out, she decided not to move. I stayed with the friends' family, graduated from Orm High. I've been here about forty years. Like you, I'm, I was a delegate. For the last eighteen years, I was a delegate, which is longer than some people who are running for his office in fact, who've been in Utah County. It does take experience. It does take knowledge in order to do these things. John Adams, who I said was my political favorite, had this quote when his son was asking him about all the time he spent in the public's business and creating this country. John Adams said, "Public business, my son, must always be done by somebody. If wise men decline it, others will not. If honest men refuse it, others will not." And it's interesting that some people here may say, well, I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna do that. We've got transportation issues. Sure, we can solve the transportation problem. We need nine billion dollars to do that, so that's forty-two thousand dollars per household. I don't know anybody here that's got forty-two thousand that you can just put into a transportation project. They also can't be done overnight. It is interesting though, if you go on other candidates' websites and they talk about transportation, they all say that they will work with MAG or Mountain Land Association, the governments, where I work. So if it's a terrible place, I'm not so sure why they have it on their webpage that that's where they would go for transportation.
Is that it? With the end? All right. Well, there's been some, some differences here that you can, you can probably see and feel. Again, let's give a round of applause to the candidates for doing that.
Just a couple of things if you guys didn't get the text. We have Cedar Valley High School tomorrow is a county and state meet the candidates and that's from six to eight. And then we also have April thirteenth, which is Saturday. We're gonna go to the southern end of the county, which is Payson. And then for the last hour of that, we will have a state school board debate for state school board thirteen. And then I want to say, I saw a couple of people who weren't sure. They asked about SB fifty-four. As the county party, we like to ask that. That is what allowed the signature process and so gathering signatures and so all these people. We like to ask it because you'll hear it a lot and we want you to know what it is. And so if you have any other questions about that or anything that they talked about, these were some good, hard questions and our candidates did a great job. So please, if you have other questions, ask them. I'm sure they'll stick around for you and then hopefully we will see you at some of the other events. Our convention is next Saturday. Credentially begins at seven-thirty. And your house chairs will be credentialing you, so look for your house, your house district number. If you don't know what that is, you can look up on precinct quartal and/or you can ask your precinct chair. So thank you guys for coming. Have a great night.